This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Let's open up the 7:05 Planning Board meeting for the Town of Southampton. Everybody here is present, except Paul Demon. He's off today, so I'll be handling the chair position. First on agenda, we have an A&R for O'Connor Land. Ryan?
I represent O'Connor.
Would you like to come up and give us a little discussion of what we're looking at?
There's four lots that I'm looking...
You introduce yourself, please.
Sorry, Ryan Giller, 75 Russellville Road, manager of O'Connor Lumber and Timber LLC. There are four lots that I'm looking to break out of that parcel along Brickyard Road between the corner... Well, it's not the corner. It's between house number 127 and the back of, I think, 304 College Highway. I've already been through the process to pull it out of 61, so this is my next step to A&R these four lots.
So this is map 34, parcel 148, Zone Residential. There are... looking at 12... it's four lots. So one's identified as Lot 2, 3, Lot 3, Lot 4, Lot 5. Appears like each of them are about 50,000-ish. 47 is the first one. 47-614, square foot is the first one. Looks like there's over 140 feet of frontage. Second lot, you have about 51,000 square feet with 140 feet of frontage. The third one, which is known as Lot 4, you have 140 exact with 52,000 square feet. Lot 5, somewhere start at 140 feet exact with approximately 52,000 square feet. Just have another site plan here.
Is it... Chair's considered opinion that these four lots meet the dimensional requirements for 81p approval? That is an endorsement of an approval not required plan for these four lots. Is that your judgment?
That is my judgment that these are in accordance with our minimum dimensioning requirements.
That's a good question of the applicant.
Just trying to find my paperwork here. I had some additional discussions here. Open up to the board, see if there's any questions.
Yeah. This may be a bad case of déjà vu. It could be all in my imagination. Did you not come before us for approval of two lots previously on the same street?
Not on the same street, no.
Not on the same street, thank you.
No.
Looking at Mass Mapper, there was recently two other frontage lots of somewhat smaller dimension owned by a Corden LLC of Hollyok.
Correct.
You acquired those?
Correct.
That's all incorporated into this? So those lots were merged into...
They were two... For the record, they were two parcels that were combined to be one lot. They were not two lots combined to be one. They were two parcels. They were non-conforming. Each of them was non-conforming square footage or frontage. I forget exactly what it was, but they were not two building lots. They were two parcels that equaled one building lot. And I did purchase those two parcels.
I'm sure you did. But one of these lots is similar, but not quite? Or is it exactly what you acquired to merge into one?
Square footage-wise?
No, no, no. Yeah, every single square foot. Did you change the lot line layout from what you had acquired?
Yeah, I made it more uniform to the rest of the neighborhood.
My question then is, for the land record, how do we know that those two prior lots are extinguished with the...
That's what we're doing with this.
So the recording, which you'll do...
This recording will, right, negates...
Supersedes all that.
Right. The engineer...
Surveyor.
The surveyor, I'm sorry, took that, reconfigured the lot lines, and those two parcels will never exist again. It is just these four new lots.
Right. And I know that when we last took this up, although déjà vu is not serving me well, the neighbors or townsfolk were interested in your plans for the larger parcel. You're not under any obligation to address that, but if you care to, I know that that was of particular interest.
I'm here to talk about the four A&R lots.
That's what I thought you were. I have no other questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anybody on the board?
I have no questions. This is pretty straightforward. Nothing to add.
Embry?
Open up to the public. Any questions?
Okay. Actually, I'd like to ask a question. Why would you ask such a question on that when I'm here for something kind of... It's like apples and oranges. This is a curiosity.
That's why I acknowledge that you have no obligation to address it, but I'm echoing what I heard last time you were before us for an A&R of a larger parcel.
Okay.
I think that's only responsible to the citizens that we serve.
Fair enough. And just, you know, you asked a question. I'm like to ask a question.
And I acknowledge that you have no obligation to address it.
And I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I'd like to make a... Ask if someone's gonna make a motion to endorse?
I make a motion that we endorse the four A&R lots presented to us here tonight.
Okay.
We have a motion to endorse the A&R plans for these four lots and seconding. Can I get a vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. 4-0.
Right. So I believe Paul kept the milears?
Yeah, so he's going to sign those.
So I think what he had said is, he was back from vacation, which is fine with me. I'll just get all that stuff.
Do you need... He mentioned something to me the other day about lot numbers. Do you need those?
Oh, yeah. He talked about house numbers. How do you guys do that, I guess is...
Right. Usually does that...
We back it down from the number that you referenced as your butter to the sound.
127 is the...
Believe it is. So it'd be 125, 3, 1.
He will usually ask, usually ask the person...
Can I count backwards?
127 is the house for this 10 that it bought's lot.
That's on the picture.
Five. So it's known as Lot 5.
Minimum frontage allowed by zoning.
Correct.
So we don't need to account for more than...
That would be next to 127.
So what lot number would that be?
So that's Lot 5. So that, in theory, would be 125.
125.
There we go.
123.
The number 4, right. Number 3, that's 121. Number 2 is 119.
So what's Lot 3? 121? Yes. Is that what he said?
121, yeah.
Yes.
Number 3 and then 119 for Lot 2.
Okay. Are you good with that, Ryan?
Good with what? The numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine.
We can't give you even numbers. I'm sorry.
No, I don't... It's... Paul's back, what, sometime next week, I think, a week or so? I don't know.
He keeps his own counsel.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll let Paul know about these, and he'll sign off the milears. And he'll notify you to get those recorded.
Thank you much.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night.
Congratulations.
Okay. All right. Next on agenda, we're gonna have a public hearing for... Lead Mine Road. I'm just trying to get this.
You're opening a hearing for number 49, Lead Mine Road.
It's number 48.
I'm sorry. Put my glasses on. I still can't read.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to find.
48 Lead Mine Road for ground mounted solar under provisions of our zoning bylaw.
Right. So I'm gonna read the notice of public hearing.
There you go.
To start with that. Pursuant to MGL Chapter 40, the Southampton Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday evening, July 17, 7:00 p.m., at Town Hall, first floor, 210 College Highway, Southampton, to consider the applicability of Trinity Solar for Constance Hopkins for residential solar installation located at 48 Lead Mine Road. MAP, I guess it's I-16, parcel 18. This is to conform to Solar Bylaw Section 275-7.6. Anyone wishing information and/or to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place noted above. A copy of the application may be requested in advance by emailing planningboard@townofsouthampton.org or in person at Town Clerk, 210 College Highway. Okay. Is there somebody representing the owner or Trinity at 48 Lead Mine Road?
I'm here for Trinity Solar.
If you can introduce yourself and who you work for?
Hi. Sorry. My name is Robin Wagner. I'm the signer of the cover letter for that application. I work for Trinity Solar as a ground mount specialist, and I'm here to answer any questions that anybody may have regarding this project.
Can you tell us a little bit about what the project entails? Here's a plan.
Sure. It's a 14-panel, small ground mount situated towards where the house meets setbacks. Pretty straightforward.
Do you want to say it, Dan?
I'm gonna get this...
Yeah, me too.
That's about it. It's just, it's one of the smallest systems we've built, so it's, you know, for us, it's, this feels like a really straightforward project.
Aside from the permit, are there any issues in our zoning bylaw from which you are seeking relief?
Nope. No, I think we've met everything. Actually, in the cover letter, I did mention that the how, the land, the way that it's laid out itself has tree cover pretty much along almost all the property lines, so we were seeking to not have to cover anymore with vegetation. It's gonna be very not visible from the road or from anybody else's property line.
Thank you. I got that from your letter. Thank you for the record.
So you're, as you mentioned, just to clarify, you're placing it behind the house. It's, there's vegetation, existing vegetation that's going to suffice from what I'm seeing here. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, that's correct. That's our position. I mean, obviously, if you disagree, we'll do our due diligence.
The lot is pre-existing, non-conforming lot. It's a little bit smaller, so when you meet the setbacks for the solar, you're even a little bit more constrained. The sightlines from Lead Mine Road, I looked at today, are pretty narrow alongside the house given the existing vegetated lot line. And I think, reading the plan, the array is gonna be twice the distance that the house is from the road, slightly downgrade, and more or less behind the house. So I would be okay with this relaxation of the vegetated buffer.
We typically, from a, just from past treatment in terms of the vegetation, we typically would promote that if we ever allowed it on the front side of a parcel. That typically when we would push for that requirement. But given, like you said, this is all way back, it's not really an issue.
It's downgrade from the house, downgrade from the road.
Yeah, it's pretty well hidden.
Yeah.
So just looking at the checklist here of things, you did supply a plan with property lines, assessor map information as well as existing features. You identified proposed owner or the installer to give us the proponent information. You did provide us with the, with your information as being an agent. I do see a list of abutters that was sent out.
That was my question, Mr. Chair.
By Paul.
Do we approve the notice mailing?
Well, we have a abutters list, and the mailings are...
I think the back of that packet should have the certified, the copies of the certified letter receipts, and we did get a, we did pay for a copy of the abutters list from the assessor's office. And there should be a copy of that in there as well. At least, I emailed it to Paul, so it might not be... If that's the copy that was originally sent before the abutters list was, before we mailed the letters, then you might not have it. But I see like a green striped paper back there, so I'm wondering if that's it with your folder. I can probably pull those receipts up on my phone and pass my phone to you, but I emailed Paul the receipts and a copy of the letter that we sent out.
Well, I trust this was done since Paul had provided me with a checklist of things that he had also viewed. So Paul did verify that there was proof of notification, so I don't have that copy, but he did tell me that was the case here in this, in this notification. Like to open it up to the board. If there's any questions?
I just checked against the bylaw. I didn't notice anything to comment on, so I'm good.
I'm good.
You're done?
I have one question on your term of law. You mentioned that the homeowner agrees to the abandonment and decommissioning requirements. I'm not really sure...
Oh, you know what? I apologize. I forgot you guys had those requirements as well, because I'm working on, I'm working on this exact thing in another town. But yeah, if it's in the, yeah, the cover letter, the abandonment and decommission requirements, do you guys also have... I left my packet at home. Do you guys also have the financial surety requirement? I don't think that you do. I'm working on one that does. So, but abandoning and decommissioning, we also...
The reimbursement removal shall be obtained from the financial surety post by the applicant as part of the special permit insurance. The owner or the operator shall notify the planning board by certified mail and the proposed date of discontinuation. So there's mention of the financial surety. Did you mention?
So when I emailed the initial application to Paul, I asked him about, about that as well. So that's what I put in my cover letter that I don't have in front of me. If it's a, there's a financial surety or abandonment and decommissioning. For us, it makes sense for a large solar field, but for a 14-panel system, an abandoned and decommissioning plan that requires us to pay an engineer to come up with a plan and then also, you know, account for inflation 20 years from now and also put upfront a financial surety, which I asked in the email, who would that be payable to? And just because I wasn't even sure, and I didn't really get a response about that either. It just, it feels like a lot for just 14 solar panels behind someone's house.
I would agree. We're putting a large burden on the applicant here for something that, maybe if it was something of substantial size and power that we would, we would want to require, but in this case, I mean, it's pretty tiny.
Yeah, so, and since we're on the subject of it, other towns that have similar kinds of public hearings also have, you know, proof of accessways requirements, you know, emergency maintenance plans, that sort of thing. So we typically would ask to waive those as well. It's just in the homeowner's backyard, and it's just that small system.
So if we, before, I'm sorry, before jumping around, just to keep on this topic.
Yes, indeed.
Dan, did you, is that, is that for the, for small-scale application? Are you reading it under the other ones by any chance, just to be certain? Because I don't believe in the past we've held that as...
Hmm, good question.
As a requirement for less than 10.
True.
Yeah, I apologize, because Hardwick doesn't make such distinctions. So I'm, it's all swirling around in my head right now. It's like I have another one in Hardwick to go to.
I don't think that's a, my recollection, we didn't have that as a requirement for small-scale solar.
It's on you, Dan, otherwise...
Yeah, this is tough to find on the phone, but I can't see, given the scope of this project. I think we'd be, we'd be making, we'd make it, we'd be making it extremely difficult for people to get solar installed on these properties where we want to be encouraging solar installations as a town.
I do, I did come in here with some pretty high confidence that that wasn't a requirement, so I do think that you guys do make the distinction between small, medium, and large, which is great, because lots of towns only do smaller, large commercial, and you guys actually put in a medium there. But we are under the threshold for medium as well. It's a very small system.
Is it required, first of all? Mr. Chair, I'm concerned that we don't have enough information, and without prejudice, and rather encouraging the applicant, because we want to do the right thing, I'd like to table this until our next meeting, when we can get verification of notification of the abutters, but also whether or not a surety bond...
I mean, so I got the notification, the abutters was in the thing. Cross that one off.
If the applicant is seeking a waiver surety and has not included that in the cover letter, obviously, we really can't just give them a bonus or mulligan or whatever it is.
I'm a little hesitant to wanna suggest us tabling it. I think...
Okay, Mr. Chair, then we need a definitive reading of our bylaw.
Let's look at that.
Thank you.
Section H.
Because the applicant did not seek a waiver.
So that'd be Section H for those size?
We're in Southampton, New York, right?
Obviously.
Is that the rich one? Okay, yeah. It looks like Section H applies for medium and large. Let's see what size that is.
I believe on the actual planning board application, it should have...
Greater than 16 kilowatts, medium scale.
Yeah. We're, we're less than 10.
There you go. Yeah, that doesn't apply.
I'm sympathetic, but we don't know where the hell we are.
So just to clarify, Dan, you said that it's 16 KW is the cutoff for the, for the requirement for decommissioning and surety?
For medium and large.
Yes, medium and large are defined...
So we're not there.
We're not there.
Clearly. So I, so this does not apply.
Yep.
In terms of the notified abutters, Dan, you said you found it...
Yeah, it's...
On a, on a scanned.
I can show you if you'd like, but yeah, we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 abutters notified with the certified mail receipts. Oh, here's more, 6.
It should be 8 or 9, I believe.
You have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5...
42 lead mine, 57 lead mine, I mean, that says. 43 lead mine, 44 lead mine, 50 lead mine, 44 lead mine, 54 lead mine, 49 lead mine, 45 lead mine, 23 County Road. No, sorry, 234 County Road. That's a 4, so...
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve this application for small-scale, ground-mounted residential solar array with a waiver of or no requirement for any vegetative screening nor any surety bond.
All right, let's hold off on that. I like the enthusiasm. We need to close the meeting first.
All right.
Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close the meeting.
If you're aware about that, so we, we probably, do we get to speak, ask any questions at this point?
Yeah, absolutely, you do. Thank you. I canceled that.
Cancel.
Cancel that motion. Thank you. The board has no more questions. Open to the public. Both of us were a little too excited to get this moving.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jeff Talend. I live at 50 Lead Mine Road. I'm the property right next to the 48. How far away is that from the property line?
Give this gentleman a copy of the plan.
About 38 feet.
38 feet, yes.
Which, which property line?
50 to 48.
Which one's that here on the, can you see which one that is?
50 is the one, I guess it'd be on the up, up age.
You're right here. So you're 38 feet.
Because I don't think we even have any stakes at the grounds for this property between 48 and 50. I'm not aware of any, because the people that own 48 also used to own 50. When I bought the property, I could find no markers for the property lines.
So this has been prepared by a professional land surveyor. They identified a long iron pin found on the opposite side of your lot, also south side of Lead Mine. And knowing that this is stamp, he showed dimensions. He carried a property line or a right-of-way line that is approximately 139 feet. He identified a point here. He carried it, projected it to a known distance that's recorded. I don't know what that distance, oh, it's 386?
It's bearing some distances without monuments. You're correct.
They didn't put any markings in or anything. They're not doing it.
Is it correct that the applicant has stated the location of the array?
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah, I saw that. I saw that. Okay.
And our bylaw says it has to be 35 feet from the side yard.
It's 38.
Right.
And all, all access to this is going to be through the property, though of the property?
Yeah, yeah. But we wouldn't expect anybody to provide access.
Personally, you know, it's not my property, and I'm, I'm not happy looking up, I'm not gonna be happy looking online, decked and looking at a solar panel. It's a beautiful area back there. It's a beautiful area back there with a lot of light. But it's their property. They gotta do what they gotta do as long as it's the required distance away from mine.
It'll be angled to the south as well. You won't get reflection of it in your direction.
Would there be any cutting of any trees or anything like that?
No, we didn't. Now we asked them to cut trees for this.
I apologize. I thought you guys were the applicant.
Go ahead. I'm Gerald Palmer. I live at 54, which is the property one beyond Jeff and my wife. Beth Honeyman is the owner of the.
Beth and her sister.
My only question is, the applicant made a comment about the abutting vegetation, which I couldn't hear. I would appreciate if you could just ask it again so that I can understand. I don't know what that means.
So the surveyor that we paid to survey the property marked out where the trees are. So you can see there's a lot of tree coverage around the property. So in terms of visibility from the road, we do not believe that it would be visible from the road and, you know, we hope that it gave enough cover also for neighbors. You say that you see the stakes from your porch. So, you know, in terms of vegetation requirements, I don't know. I would have to see the map to see if you're on the north side or the east side, but the array itself will be facing south.
Right, so that looks the picture to be away from, now we worry about the glare coming from the panels.
Yeah, and the panels are black too, so they don't really have the kind of glare that you would expect from a solar field because they're black. So, so yeah, and then if they're facing south, I think that it would be, you would see the black in the array.
Do you know approximately the angle or what?
30 degrees.
In a small array, can you give us the dimensions of the array itself?
Yeah, so the engineering specs should be in here. The ones by.
Isn't it, is it in here?
23 by 10. A neighbor has answered his own question.
Oh, yeah, so there's a ray or gap, let off the stakes. That's, yeah, that makes sense. The height of it usually to a range that size.
It's the same.
Peak at about nine feet. Yeah, this is the engineer specs. It's in inches, but you can see, you know, the panels are a portrait style. The main stage is to support this on a solar panels.
And just so I understand the bylaws, because I'm not aware of the solar expansions, there's no requirement for abutting property owners to maintain line of stun to the panels, right? So if this vegetation continues to grow, it.
That's the thing that I've actually ever seen in bylaws, doing this for a while. So I don't, it would, yeah, we would waive that, ask for that requirement to be waived too, because we would feel that'd be very unfair to neighbors to be responsible for that anyway.
And my last question is actually irrelevant, because it doesn't apply. Okay, I was gonna ask about the abandonment thing. All right, but that doesn't apply to this. Okay.
Thank you. Good questions.
Ma'am, any more questions? Do you have, yes, okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does that mean the meeting's over?
Not yet. We've got a vote.
Lot of process.
Can I get a motion for the approval of the small panel, ground-mounted, 14-panel system at 48 Lead Mine Road? Before I finish that sentence, I don't believe we have any conditions that we were going to propose. Can I get a motion to approve the small array at, or the small panel at 48 Lead Mine Road?
I'd like to move that we approve the application for a ground-mounted solar system at 48 Lead Mine Road as proposed with no requirement for additional vegetative screening.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion has been approved. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your questions.
Nice to see you, man.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Picture that, do we have?
Why don't you take this? You know what? You can take, take this.
You too? Thanks for coming. Uh, no, it's important to hear from the neighbors. Keep us honest.
All right, can we open up to other business?
Yeah. So I think an important topic for us to talk about as the planning board is the acquisition of land on College Highway. And I would think that the planning of how the town should best utilize that site should come from the planning board, right? So I think that the planning board should start talking about either employing a contract group to help gather the town's input on how to best shape that project, but I think it's, I think it's on us to start that conversation moving forward.
I concur. Another discussion regarding that, I think the bigger question that I had had is who, you know, railroads, not railroads, but the controls and signs. How the process works, not necessarily. I hope we've got the railroad out of this.
Yeah, may determine the best entity to shepherd this process.
I think that it is within the select board's purview with the support of the town administrator to select a consultant because the breadth of interests, you know, crosses many departments and committees. That said, you know, Dan's point is right on. If we're talking about land planning, why not? What is the role of the planning board? My feeling, what I've tried to do is ensure that people get accurate information. There's been such a, as I, listen to people ask questions and raise concerns. They clearly don't have enough facts in front of them to work on. As we get over that hurdle, we need to empower especially our boards and committees, but the general citizenry, to imagine how these multiple public goods could be achieved. Let me drop back. We got the property because it was the first priority for a public safety building. And I think we need to ensure that although they had an original plan to acquire about five acres, that they were given an opportunity to take a fresh look at it with a professional planner, whether that really optimizes the utility for a public safety building. Second, the senior senate had a property in mind and didn't prove developable for them. They are at least conditionally on board to join the party, but they have even less an idea about where on the property they might ideally like to land. There is, I'm delighted to say, significant interest in housing options on this property. And it has become the focus for our 40R rezoning efforts, in addition to or instead of, ahead of, the earlier proposal up around Red Rocks and Big Line. So I think we really need to move forward with evaluating the 40R application, at least for this property, perhaps for the College Highway corridor, or whatever size is appropriate for that program. And that is part of the fundamental foundation for the land planning. What is the zoning? If we're going to pursue 40R, and there's been great desire to do that because, well, Richard Harris expanded on how it has benefited South Hadley, which adopted 40R. They're moving forward with some medium-high-density affordable housing, and they've received two or three different tranches of ongoing estate funding annually. So I'm not here to in any way represent that I know about 40R. Headlines, mixed-use development. So we can step back from, oh, the frontage is only 700-plus feet and the commercial district is 330 feet deep. If it's rezoned, then we have quite a different offering for an affordable housing partner and for the way we mix municipal uses with small-scale commercial uses. It's saying everyone has appetite to explore what kind of commercial development might fit with municipal interests. And, you know, does that sound complicated? I'll tell you, it is fairly complicated. The land is pretty, I've even said too developable because it's, it's so porous that that is a limitation for onsite septic. So the whole thing tees up around rezoning and sewer. If we have reasonable path forward on rezoning, that helps leverage public investment for infrastructure, zoning, roads, site development, even site planning. So I think 40R is our first hurdle. Richard Harris would be an impartial and experienced, personally, professionally experienced person to guide us in understanding this, to me, is highly convoluted law, with a variety of incentives, where the town has many opportunities to shape what that program looks like. Well, that's great. It's like a really complex piece of software. You have to learn how to get the value out of it. So how do we understand what the rezoning might open up in terms of land planning flexibility, multi-use, not a strict commercial versus residential demarcation? And then we're gonna need professional guidance. And I've given town administrator and chair of the select board three references that I know about, but, you know, I'm the newest newcomer, so I invite you all to do the same or us as a board, because it would be kind of odd if the planning board wasn't present in this process.
Planning. Just step back. I'm not saying we're gonna figure it all out tonight. I kind of just want to introduce the concept, because I think that part of our role for a town, or city or municipality, is, is we do a great job at reviewing proposals that people want to do to their property, but also the town planning part of it. What do we want to do to help grow the town in different ways? And if we look at what other towns would do, they have someone on full-time staff. I'm not saying we need that type of full-time service, but I start to think that if we had somebody who's working in that, in that area to focus on not only approvals, but looking at our bylaws, but also looking at how we want to shape our town going forward, I think this College Highway project is a good, good way to, to start building a relationship with somebody who could fill that role, that we would be providing a better service to the town.
So if I'm hearing you accurately, the impetus is to get going with the physical planning on these 54 acres and make sure that we can carry forward in support of the public safety building, council on aging, all other interests and parties. And that, there's this emergent need for a staff person, chaired maybe among the land-related permitting authorities.
For the amount, the amount that this town needs for planning purposes.
Probably be joint with the conservation agency.
Sure. Right.
A land resource officer.
So what I'm hearing is you want to have the board support the idea of a site planning study by a professional to review potential of that site. It's not really our vote, it's not really our say, it's the select board's say, it's under their purview, correct?
Right, right. But truly, if you have ideas about firms and there's not some sort of conflict, you're concerned.
Is Richard Harris excluded out of?
I have no idea. I would think he'd be a good candidate. So as I described it to town administrator and select board chair, I think that there's a funny dichotomy of public facilitation, whether it's getting our boards and committees to jell around an idea and/or some amount of wide-open public information sharing. Facilitation, but it also has to manifest in a survey plan, a lotting plan, if you will, preliminary lot plan that'll then be tested out by each of the proponents to make sure that the geotech and the, that their own building program in fact proves out. And I have no idea what then the transfer and dedication process would be for each of the individual lots, but, you know, if we who understand plans don't step up and say, yeah, we'll help our colleagues mark up a plan and express their ideas, then, like Dan, I don't know, we should all resign.
Mark, this is more like a.
Yeah, I mean, I care for this, but, you know.
The Altratown does all the time.
Yeah. Firm's trying, firm rate with it, do this. Again, the word before is to design charrette. Charrette. And essentially you wound up with a blank slate and everybody comes in with, throw their ideas on there, multiply layers of concepts, and then sort of whittle that down as to what makes the most sense and with input from each of the interested parties. But, you know, again, it's getting us started and then how we get a role in that's best for the mic, which I think once it gets going, I think if people be excited about it, they all have their input to it. So it's just a case of establishing the vehicle to get that rolling.
Great idea.
I guess I can ask you a question. Do you guys have a lot of experience talking with towns that are probably around our size? How do they, what do you see for best practices for managing that type, this type of thing? Do they usually just form a small group to address the specific problem and that group will get disbanded afterwards? Or do they try to establish, and it's a better practice to try to establish a relationship with some type of planning organization that can help support guiding a longer-term vision of the town? I think that's the part that I kind of want to understand is some, in our role here, in what we do with the planning board, we think we're covering all the bases we should as a planning board for the guided growth in direction of the use of our land in town, you know? So I guess I'd look to you guys from all your experience with other towns. So I guess I'd look to you guys from all your experience with other towns and, you know, are we on the right track or would, would you say maybe we could better, do it better by, with a different structure or what, you know?
How much money do you want to spend?
I mean, I think that's the question, like, what would we need? What do other towns need? They probably don't have like a full-time person, right? They probably have some...
Here, here's an idea, and I don't know if this is 100% the direction the town would want to take, but I think having a, um, listening session or having somebody, and let's say, let's say we want to do this on the cheap. Let's say we have a defined amount of dollars. Let's say someone says, hey, we got, we got five grand. Someone lays out the, the parcel that we're looking at. Somebody, um, researches what the zoning requirements are, things of that sort. What's the maximum we can get? And then that's something that could be presented at a public charrette that you can solicit feedback, you can hear what people are saying, you can give people post-its to say, do this, do that, do this, and, um, you know, give them some Sharpies and go from there. Now, the next step, and let's say overwhelming everybody is in support of a 40R or, or something similar, you can issue an RFP that will solicit developers to come up with the plan that matches your group's vision. And you can issue a date saying, okay, two months from now, or I don't know what the appropriate time, something Rich can maybe provide some feedback on, on the, on the actual timing. Um, and then the select board or a designated committee can actually rule on the best proposal in favor of, of, of the town. One of the benefits of doing it in that manner is you basically punt the, um, study and the evaluation and all the technical work to a developer that's going to do the work. So you might say, you're looking specifically for 40R, how do we optimize this? However, I'm just going to just, just throw out the super obvious things. Developer's going to look at this and say, wow, how am I going to spend this much effort putting together a plan for something that in, in the eyes of a developer doesn't have, doesn't have funding for the, for the sewer? So you've got to maximize your potential for development, yet you don't have, uh, an opportunity to, to make this a reality, right? Because you're now chasing water, pumping water, how many miles into, into East Hampton? If you can get, get it there?
Hopefully draining sewer, not water, um, to East Hampton to an existing main in the greenway.
Gray water, yes.
Gray water. Well, it's, it's, it's the whole mix. I didn't want to confuse it with, um, public drinking water because we have...
We have our own, of course. I was referring to...
Both our own plus a reciprocal arrangement. And that stuff does have to get pumped up from the well where it's extracted to provide the head...
Right, well, that's, that's a different story, right? I was talking...
Different story, and I just wanted to make sure we're talking about sewer, which was the first ever for this municipality, though it's been studied.
Right, so, yeah.
I think we would need some reassurances that we were in the Mass Works program for infrastructure development and aid in developing sewer line before we would be able to get a definitive contract, RFP, going with a developer who would do either housing or mixed use. The developer would not necessarily attend to our particular needs for public safety or the senior center, but I think for that...
Well, there would be a blockout. There'll be a carve-out that, that they need to recognize and respect.
A piece of the planning, yeah.
Right, so that part of it. However, I, the more I think about this, there's, there's a lot of hurdles we need to first address.
Yep.
Frankly...
Make a list.
No, 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 because... Listen, no, 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 let me finish. What's, what, what we need is a professional, and I frankly think that someone should pay for Rich Harris to show up to a select board meeting to identify what he's experienced in South Hadley in terms of the steps that someone's going to take in order to solicit these things. Because frankly, I want, if I'm, if I'm going to spend, you know, $20,000 of my own money at a developer to submit an RFP to the town, I want to know for sure that this is not a waste of time.
Yeah.
But we need to somehow get there. Someone needs to tell us what that roadmap is to fish our way through this.
So let me, um, reel back a little bit. For some number of years, the housing authority's been interested in pursuing 40R zoning. With the town's acquisition of this property, we have refocused and renewed interest in the 40R zoning. I have asked our dear chair to organize a presentation by Richard Harris, in fact, for a joint meeting of the planning board and housing authority. I'm afraid there's a little bit of this going on. I won't even say the words, but it's high time that we do exactly what you suggest. And your suggestion that we include the select board is absolutely ideal because we need the highest level of...
They are the funding mechanism.
Yeah, well, sure.
We're not going to fund it.
Right. No, we don't have a budget. The select board doesn't clearly have a budget either, but we have a need, and so...
Someone's got to fund it.
Yeah, but, but what moves, what, what moves the executive body, pressure up?
I, I understand, but it's, it's a, to be honest with you, this is at least, I, I, the more I think about this, this is probably just for us to even, to even put something out to a developer, your, your, your at least 25 grand, I just, I would imagine would...
Two times that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I think, must you, I mean, the first step that you would need to go have on your hardware was to do a land use study. It's essentially look at a property, do an evaluation of slopes, wetlands, setbacks, et cetera. And then once you have that criteria established, well, that's, well, great for ball fields, but that's too steep over there. That's, uh, high groundwater. And, um, you know, have a land use study and then touch the maps and names, like you can do a color-coordinated map. These all areas are, you know, superior for this. This is not superior for that. And then I think, like you said, sort of carve out, there's got to be three or four places that are ideal. I think probably the senior center and the public safety building are probably two of the, I think, I think the town sort of had their eyes on when they, when they went and purchased this property, have those, you know, someone determine that those are the two priority areas. And remainder of the property, how is it best utilized to balance between other uses, recreational, 40B housing, et cetera. But I think unless you have that first plan, everybody's going to say, yes, I want it. We're going to, we're going to zone the entire parcel 40R, or is that something we need to do? I think people like to have something on their hands. They had a plan with the, the boxes on there, which shows the different potentials, and this red box is really the best place for the senior center, the best place for the public safety building, and we have a remainder to do things with, you know, let's balance that with. But I'm not, I'm just setting a free sequence of priority, but that's not my job.
Well, I think that what you're describing is, yes, the public safety building committee ought to express what their highest objectives are. If they're not going to draw new lines on the plan compared to the 125 that we approved on College Highway, um, they don't have to do the technical design, but tell us we want more frontage, we want the building closer to the street, we want to have the dedicated driveway. For us, it doesn't matter what zoning side yard setbacks are, we need this kind of circulation around the building. I think they're well-prepared to describe that. The senior center committee, I think, has a good building plan, and they did a very preliminary site plan for a corner of this property, and they threw up their hands and said it wasn't workable. Okay. What is it they're trying to accomplish? Visibility from the road, easy turning access for seniors, you know? Each of the uses can, if they can't draw the lot plan, they can say what they're trying to accomplish. We'd love to look out over ball fields. No, we'd hate to look out over ball fields. I heard, we don't want to listen to sirens. Oh, okay.
Good luck with that.
So, you know, that's, that's what a professional planner does in the charrette stage, and then you turn into a basic concept plan, maybe color-coded so that the public can say, oh, that's great, but why didn't you do this? Or what's missing? So I think that it takes it from the committees articulating what their goals are, somebody making this first RFP plan, maybe a land planner, maybe yes, but when it, when it comes to public facilitation, I think we need that expert from at least five miles away, because it's not me, could be this gentleman, I'd submit it's not our chair, it's probably not the planning board chair. It, it really needs someone who's very skilled at facilitation, and then the back office to draw the dimension plans. It, it's not rocket science, but I think it's probably closer to $50,000 to get us to the lotting plan.
I, I would suggest, before you even throw money out there, I think it's...
No, it's wild to ask.
I know, I know, but I, I would suggest there's a listening session with, with interested parties as well as Rich, uh, Rich Harris to provide some reality.
That's...
And it's got to be, it's got to be done from the select board. So, um, you know, that, that's the easiest way to get something done.
Who has the authority to contract with Richard Harris? Town administrator or only the chair?
I believe it's the chair.
So I think you're absolutely right. Richard Harris has the personal professional experience. He'd be the first, least expensive introduction, and yes, it needs to be to the select board. But, um, Mr. Minister of the Chair, would you please speak to the chair and see if you can get a letter?
Talk to the, talk to the chair.
Thank you. I, you know, I, I think, have Richard Harris do a joint session for the select board, housing us, other interested, you know, inside municipal people to get it launched. What is 40R and how does it relate to our challenge?
I'm sure Rich would be excited to do that.
Well, I, I, he seemed pretty animated when he gave...
That's what I mean, I'm being, being sincere.
Okay.
That wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't a joke.
Okay, good, good.
Not at all.
Well, thank you for the conversation. I, I think it's great to talk about how the planning board can be involved in this.
And you, sir, um, this town has two versions of its master plan on the website, and we have a master plan implementation committee that meets irregularly, but they go through a, an established, uh, year-by-year goal list.
That's our method for planning as a town.
And, you know, given that it's a volunteer structure...
Yep.
That's what we've got, and we should be on top of that.
Yeah.
And I found in a quick, I am not a, a scholar of our master plan, but I did a quick scan, find plenty of support for, the towns had their eye on this parcel for a variety of reasons for decades.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of my question, the connection between the master planning committee and the planning board, you know?
I think it connects through Chris and through Christina Mattson.
Okay, yeah, I remember her.
And other people, sure, but I know that they've been involved in the delegation.
Well, thank you all for the conversation.
Uh, thank you for teaming up, of course.
Uh, there's warrants.
I suggest we pay for the legal notice. I would like to move that we authorize warrant to the Daily Hampshire Gazette in the amount of $396.74 for the solar hearing notice.
We have a motion to authorize for the, uh, Daily Hampshire Gazette for a figure of 300, what? I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me.
$396.74.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dan, that was by you seconded, right?
I seconded, yeah.
Yeah. Any committee reports?
Yeah, I think we've covered it.
I think we've covered it.
At least log that to the...
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Aye.
Aye.
And so...